Hi, my name is Dana here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since 1907.
Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gwinnett with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gwinnett and Fayette.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwinnett to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck Spann here with Spann Hardware and Equipment in downtown Winfield. Hope you're having a happy fall. As we move into the fall season, any of your needs you have around the house as far as lawn cleanup, whether you need blowers, sweepers, lawnmowers to chop them up with, or just handheld tools for projects around the house, come see us. We'll help you out. Spann Hardware and Equipment, downtown Winfield.
At home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at 205-487-4327.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bradford, State Farm Agent in Winfield, and I'd like to introduce my team to you. To my left, to the far left, is Beth Turner, and next to her is Ann Barnes, and to my right here is Mr. Todd Estes. We'd like to invite you to call us or come see us at any time for any of your insurance needs. We're happy to help you in any way. We appreciate your business, and we look forward to hearing you and doing business with you. Thank you.
Let's pray. In the grace and honor of God, thank this another day. Thank for all the many blessings in life you give us, Lord. Forgive us, we failed you because we're doing so many ways that I know I do myself. Lord, I pray that you be with this body as they make the decisions for the city, that they be the best interest for the people and the better for the good. I pray that you be with us as we go through the rest of this week and be with all the leaders of this country. Lord, that they look to you for guidance in your precious name. Pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome another body to the December the 2nd of the Winfield City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2025 meeting. If anybody's got a question or comment how those minutes are going to be recorded, I need to ask for motion to approve those minutes. Grab my motion and second by a mile, all in favor. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Tori Rainey. Mr. Brad brought this to my attention. We need to request that we honor June Victoria Rainey for the life-saving actions she done. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'm going to ask the council if they would to approve this proclamation. Whereas on Friday, November 21st, 2025, a life-threatening emergency occurred when Isaac Changless began choking on an object at the Winfield City High School, whereas Tori Rainey was present during the critical moment and recognizing the sign of distress, promptly courageously intervened, and whereas Tori Rainey utilized their knowledge of the hammock remover maneuver abdominal thrust to successfully dislodge the obstruction, thereby saving the life of Isaac Changless. Whereas a selfish and quick-thinking action is a testament to the importance of first-aid training and community diligence. And whereas the City of Winfield wishes to formally commend Tori Rainey for their extraordinary heroism and dedication to the well-being of others, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Rendell Cross, on behalf of the entire community of Winfield, all in due hereby honor and recognize June Victoria Rainey for the outstanding burden of life-saving efforts and extend our deepest gratitude for her decision decisive action. Now, I need to ask for motion to accept this proclamation in a second. Chris made a motion, mile, second, all in favor. It's Victoria. She can come up here. Next item on the agenda is the Park Board appointment. We had tabled this on meeting two ago with all the other accident stuff that we have got on. I've got a, to the Mayor Prize members of Winfield City Council, Winfield Park, from the Winfield Park Board, recommendation for the reappointment of Park Board member. The Winfield Park Board respectfully submits this letter to formally recommend the reappointment of Leanne Van Hand as a member of the Park Board. Leanne has faithfully served the board for the past 12 years, and her dedication has made her an invaluable asset to our Parks and Recreation Program. She consistently gives her time, consistently attending all meetings, special events, and fundraisers. Her commitment extends beyond her own efforts. She often brings additional volunteers to assist further enhancing the success of our community's activities. Leanne's continued service would be tremendous benefit to the board, and we firmly believe that her experience of liability and passion for our parks make her an ideal member for the reappointment. Say thank you for your consideration of this recommendation. Appreciate your continued support of Winfield Park Board and the work we do for our community. Submitted by Winfield Park Board. Be it based as a recommendation from that board to reappoint Leanne, it's my recommendation to the council that we do the same, to appoint her. But I've got a council member here that's showing that we've got another person in the community that's interested in that position. Gina, you want to talk or speak on behalf of that? I think everybody's got a copy of this in there.
I'm going to talk to Drake Hall. Drake is a dedicated, educated coach, lifelong athlete, committed to Winfield youth community. And it makes him an ideal addition to the Park Board. His lifelong long athletic dedication to youth has been serving the Winfield community makes him an outstanding candidate. His voice, his experience, and vision will be valuable to the future of Winfield Parks and Recreation. And makes him my ideal candidate.
And I know he has kind of worked his position for a while.
Counsel, got any comments or questions about this? My recommendation is by the board recommendation as to reappoint Leanne, but if the council sees fit that there needs to be somebody else in that position, I'm totally understand. You know, I'm probably, if nobody's got any other discussion about it, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept my recommendation to the council, and then I'm going to ask for a second.
The motion is go by the board.
Tim made a motion to reappoint in a second by Chris. All in favor to reappoint Leanne to that board? We got, to, we got a motion and a second, and that's all we've got is a motion and a second. You're sustaining, is that recommendation? You're not voting?
No, I'm not, no, not a recommendation.
Yeah, and y'all two stay, well, not with that recommendation.
Or, I'm with.
You're willing to vote?
I'm with. Yeah, I'm with for that, your recommendation to the Park Board.
So... Well, I mean, it's my recommendation to the council to make my recommendation, ask for a motion and a second, so it's a tie. The way that I, the way that I understand that, I mean, it's a three to three. It's the three to three goes the way that I made a recommendation. Is that not correct?
No, I believe, I believe there's not an appointment.
Right, so you're going to leave it like it is?
Well, there's, there's three to three, that doesn't, that doesn't pass.
Okay, so, so we're going to, we're going to need to revote on another one, or we're going to leave that position vacant?
Well, it's just, if someone makes a motion, you can vote on another name.
Well, I mean, it's going to be evident that there's, okay. So, I was, in my, my understanding is, if I ask for a motion, it's going to be one of the three to sustain from.
Because it voted no, there was no abstentions, it would be a...
Okay. So, based on Todd, since we didn't get anywhere with the first recommendation, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to appoint Drake Hall to that Park Board position. Gina made a motion. I got a second, but Brad, all in favor? You all, you all motion, second, and you're, you're, you still three to three?
Still three to three. There's no appointment.
Next item on the agenda is the DA or Board appointment. I'm going to make a recommendation that we table that appointment. I'm still not ready to move forward with appointments for those, the DA or Board appointments. I need to ask for motion to let me table that one at that time. And I promise that we'll have something. I spoke to that board, and we'll have something in next meeting. If you're not going to give me a motion vote, I need a motion to table that item.
Motion.
Chris made a motion. Brad, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is police chief about a new hire. You here, Brett?
Yes, sir. I would like to recommend Nathan Morrison for position of police officer. Nathan worked with us, he graduated the academy in 2020. He worked with us in 21, and just got a good fit at that particular time. Moved on to Walker County and has been over there for some time. Came back, I had a fling interview with Nathan, and was very impressed. He's grown quite a bit. I'm a man of second chances. You know, when he first came on, I was needed because of, there could have been as many issues as many as there were with him, but... From what I heard during the interview, I'd like to have him back. I think, I think he'd be an absolute good member.
How many years you say he's got law experience now?
He graduated Jefferson County Academy in 2020.
Has he, has he worked for you in your part time?
No, sir.
So, he's got, he's got the academy behind him. Is he, is he in good status with that academy, with that Jefferson County?
Yes.
Based on Brett's insight checking and interviewing Mr. Morrison, that's my recommendation that the council will go with one of his recommendations to hire him as an officer. And that'll leave you down how many?
I'm, besides, Kevin moved to Florida.
You ask for motion to allow him employed. Miles made a motion, Brad seconded, all in favor.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution under 1418, official intent for bond issue. Todd, have you discussed this with the new members of the council? Was there something we need to go?
We, I, I can't remember who I talked to. I know Miles and I talked about it, this in the Cooperative District, and I think I talked to Bob about it, and I believe, Chris, you and I talked about it.
Little bit.
Little bit, yeah. This is, this resolution is step one. This doesn't mean you have to actually do it, but this is the first step that you must take, and it's the official intent to, currently, we're talking about two bond issues. One would be to deal with the proposed Big Mike's Steakhouse transaction that, that we talked about and signed an incentive agreement on. That is a taxable bond issue. And then the other is a economic development project that is non-taxable because it's, it's the money we've talked about borrowing for the roadwork and the water and sewer improvements up there at the corridor, or Exit 30. I call it the corridor, but it is Exit 30. That portion is non-taxable, so it's two series. It's a series A and B, one is a taxable, one is a non-taxable. And this is the step one in the process. It does not commit us to going forward with that. We may decide some other forms of financing, but if we're going down that road, this is step one. We must take this step. So, this is, that's the resolution. The, and the other thing is, the amounts would be three and a half and three and a half. Now, that's more than we think we're going to need in either one, but you can always go down, but if you shoot low and miss, then you got to go back through the process. So, that's the reason, that number, we're not locked into that number. We can lower that number to whatever the, the numbers come in that we're actually going to need. That's what number we'll end up going with. This is not an official bond resolution. This is just a intent resolution. And currently, this, this would, would then engage Frazier Lanier as the, as the broker and Brad, Brad Cherry, Maynard Nixon, used to be Maynard Cooper, as the bond attorneys. So, it's, it's a final approval of, of the bond attorneys and final approval of Frazier Lanier as the brokers, if we go forward with it. This doesn't, like I said, this doesn't commit us to it, it's just, but it's the first step we must take. So, that's that resolution.
Everybody kind of understanding in a nutshell about this being the first step before we move forward with this, and what we're working on, what we're trying to do, the financing or the money part of the addition at the Exit 30. Anybody got any other questions for Todd? Chris, you got anything? If everybody's in the understanding, I need to ask for a motion to accept this resolution 1418.
I'll make that motion.
Chris made a motion on the second attempt, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is old business. Brad, you got any old business? Chris?
No.
Miles?
Yeah, I do. So, I know we purchased a lot of vehicles lately in the last couple of years. Some of them, we haven't been able to get some logos on them yet. Probably about five or six. Couple at Street Department, I think there might be one at the park. I'd just like to see if we can get some logos on them pretty soon.
Have you thought with those, for my head?
No.
You saying this was a street department?
I think there might be one at the park, I'm not, not sure.
We got anything at the park, Gina?
Unless it's the dump. I'm not sure if it has a runway.
The dump truck? I thought you had a, which you, what vehicle you're talking about?
There's one, there's a Ford utility-looking truck out there. I'm not sure if it's ours or not. It's, it's in between the dump truck and extended cab shed.
Got a utility bed on?
Yeah. I don't know if that's ours or not.
Okay, that's one of the last purchases we got. That won't be no problem. You can make the sign for that, can't you, Gina?
Um, that would drive off because usually we do that at your, so that it's more easy.
If you don't mind, I don't see a problem. Go ahead and move forward, put that decal on the truck. What's the other one?
So, there's, in that Street Department, there's two garbage trucks. The one Rob's got, the one, the regular cab that Youngblood drives, and then that crew cab Ford that Long for Long don't have none on it, so...
Crew cab what?
The crew cab Ford that they put lawnmowers, haul the lawnmowers with. I think there's, that's five.
The rest of the council got any problem? I'm going to put a decal on the truck. All right, I'll reach out to all of them.
And then, this is something we can consider. I got, it's Pike Road. It goes from State Bank, Faith Church, that New Lister Hill, Clayton Supply, and, but it's supposed to have a turn lane down the middle of it. And like, when that side tail building was actually open, like 2008, if you can go back on Google Earth with some of the pictures on, you can see the lines used to be, it was just supposed to be a turn lane all the way down there. And I think with all that traffic we're getting, school bus, and the New Lister Hill, Faith Church, and there's a daycare also at Past Clayton Supply, like to look at us getting the lines repainted. I reached out to a guy, he gave me a quote, I don't know if I can get, find a better quote, or you know, might know anybody else that could get us a quote for that?
Well...
If, if that's something we wanted to do.
That turning lane, where's it, was it actually stopped before getting, coming up to here?
So, it's, it goes all the way down to Clayton Supply, stops at Clayton Supply.
It coming back, back this way?
Yeah, it comes all the way from 43. It starts at 43, and it starts on Pike Road, and goes all the way down to, to Clayton Supply. Oh, yes, it stops right where intersection with Post Lane.
Yeah.
It stops all the way.
That's the line you're talking about?
Yes, and goes all the way down to intersection with Clayton Supply and Post Lane, right there, which is the road you turn left to go to the school, the new school building.
What kind of, you don't have to tell me who you got or what kind of quote you got. Just what kind of paint that, is it regular paint?
I'm not really sure on the paint you said. The other paint that's like that was originally on it, it cost way too much to be got, it'd be a lot more than, so...
It's the, it's like what's on the road?
Yeah, it's a lot expensive. I don't think we'd be, well, that road probably need repaved after, I don't know, not soon, but eventually that road's going to need to be paved. I don't think it's a point to spend that much money on lines on it, but it definitely needs it.
The council sees to put those, put those yellow lines back on that road, and let me get some prices on it and bring it back to the next council meeting. It'd be fine to be up there. What else you got?
And then, on, so, on County Road, where Pike Road kind of curves and starts, go to County Road 69, that goes by the new jam, storage building, and goes out back to 43, on Walmart. I think when you look at, try to get some, a light on that curve, and then another light at that intersection where it's actually right off 43, because that new gas station's kind of, feels like some, there's more traffic, and right there, I think we might get some street light, put a light up on one of the poles.
So, you're looking at one at the end of?
It's 69, but it's right, it's 69 that goes and puts up with 43, which is right.
And then you're talking about that Troll Road putting another?
Yeah, yeah, that curve, yeah. Because that, whenever that jam gets finished, it sure is going to be more traffic right there, too.
I can, since you mentioned that, we've got a, I've got a request for a street light. Over here in the, in the, I'm trying to look at it, my friend. Stone, is it, Stone Ridge or, I get confused. See one of the subdivision where I'll text you to you, the... Yeah, they...
Stone, is it Stone Ridge off of 47?
Yeah, and what's the other one off of 14?
Well, you got another one.
Right there. Stone Ridge and Stone, um...
Yeah, Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge, too.
Stony Ridge and Stone Ridge?
You got two, that's two different neighborhoods.
Yeah.
One off 47.
That's one, that's off Cherokee. Mm-hmm.
That cobble sack. Yeah, cobble sack, little cobble sack right there.
It's the end, it's a dead end to a cobble sack.
Yeah.
Just, I need to look, I need y'all to look at the lighting in both those, those streets in their city streets, look at the lighting on both those and see what you think. And then we'll look at the lighting that you're talking about over here. The council can look at the lighting over here where it's down on Troll Road, goes into 69, and then over 69, or 69 comes back out on 118 at that intersection. We'll put that, I'll, I'll, Angie, put that back on the agenda for the next meeting. For both of them. So, you got ten things?
This was on, that Cooperative District was on the agenda last time, and I didn't realize that it wasn't picked up on the agenda this time. The resolution was with the Cooperative District. And I didn't realize that it wasn't picked up on the agenda this time, the resolution was with the, the Cooperative District. Uh, what, no, there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, before we go out, I'll bring it back up on that, uh, Cooperative District. Do you have anything, uh? Gina?
Um, so, have you gotten the quote, the final corporate, the ones that were, like?
I did, Miles, I think, if you get, see anybody else, anybody else got a copy of that quote? I didn't, I'm not ready to, I mean, personally, I'm not satisfied with that quote, and I didn't want that quote to be put out there just yet. I'm gonna try to seek a different way to do it. I'm just, that's, 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 way that, I, I'm not ready to put it out for bid. I, I'll, Miles has done got a copy of it, thank you, Angie, I'll give each one of y'all a copy of that quote, and then I'll go over with you why I'm not really, I don't want to put it out for bids yet. It's not that we're not wanting to do the roads, not that I'm not wanting to do the roads, I just, I think we need to do it a little bit different, the way we've been handling it. You got anything else? Uh, on the old business, uh, I need to bring up the fact about us, uh, the city, uh, moving forward with this. I don't, I think that we've had some discussion with, uh, most of council members. We, uh, about doing a Cooperative District up here, on the city's property at exit thirty. Todd, I think briefly went into the discussion about the Cooperative part of it being with us and the Water Department. I think, uh, it's a three-member board.
It's three-member board, and the city would, as it's, as it's set up now, the city would appoint two members to the board, and the Water Department would point one to the board. But that's the, you've got to have two public entities, and the two public entities that we've chosen are the city and the Water Department, because those are the two entities that have the most skin in the game up there. That are gonna have most, do most of the work and be most involved with what we're doing up there, so.
The Cooperative District part of it will be one way for us to, to help incorporate, you know, some of the funds that we spent for roads, sewer, and water, in there and help maintain it. There were any, we can choose who we attach the Cooperative District fee to, if we choose to or not to. Uh, be based on that board's decision whether the, uh, it, 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 it might have to be where it's a bargaining type two, when something wants to locate in there or not, um...
Is, is the fee adjustable?
It'd be a set fee.
A set fee for e- each, each different one that came in, it's like I said, one came in, they got a certain fee, but then another one came in, we could adjust that fee? Or is it a set fee across the board?
If, if they, if they was, we want to...
We can choose not to charge that fee.
You, you can choose anything from zero to a two percent fee, because two percent is the maximum. That's what's listed in the incorporation paperwork. So, this piece of property, if you have to sign an incentive agreement where you have to spend X number of dollars to, to develop that one, you can set it a fee of two percent on this one. The next one over here, you don't have to spend as much money, or there's not as, as much economic incentive that you offer. You don't have to put a fee on that one, and then the fee can, the fee can go away. It can last for a certain period of time until you've recouped what you've invested in it, and then you can drop the fee. But it, it can be, it can be assessed on each individual piece of property, and, and we're putting all of the property in, but a two percent doesn't mean that two percent has to go on all of it. It can go on each line, based on each deal that you do, or each incentive agreement that you sign. And it operates for the benefit of the entities that do it, and all of the, and, and the, the, what's, what we need to understand is it, the city is not giving its property to the Cooperative District. It's still the city's property. There would be an agreement, for example, this one that we're talking about, the Big Mike's deal that we're talking about. The city will lease the property to the Cooperative District, which would turn around and lease it to the Big Mike's for that deal. And everything that would flow to the Cooperative District would flow to the city, because the city is the one that has the property and is developing the property. So it would just be a flow for it.
And if we didn't, so let's say we got the Cooperative District, and then twenty years down the road, we don't want it anymore, is that?
You can end it.
You can end, okay, all right.
You can end it, but, but, let me say, there would be this caveat. Both of the en, anytime you change the, the, the makeup of the Cooperative District, the board would have to agree, and then both of the entities that make it up would have to agree. The Water Board has already adopted a resolution approving this, and so the city's doing it. So, uh, it's kinda like when the Water Boards, uh, back before you were on here, but when the Water Boards, uh, amended, articles of incorporation were amended, before that could be done, the Water Board had to approve it, and then the city had to approve it, because it's the, it's, it's part of the city. So, same thing here, you could get rid of it, but both entities have to agree. Nobody could just go out and do it. Any change they make has to be approved by this entity and that entity, so.
Other than the legal party getting this drawn up and filed, any cost to this for the city?
No.
Anybody else got any other questions about this Cooperative District? You got, you got, yeah, you got a resolution next, fourteen nineteen?
And the resolution, uh, approves the application for the creation, and, Angie, this the one, Mayor, you, you signed it, James Markham has signed it, and then, and then Bill Atkins, William H. Atkinson signed it, as the initial three incorporators. And it, the authorizing subdivisions are the City of Winfield with two directors, the Water Works and Sewer Board with one director. And it's an appointed director position. This, this council appoints it, and this is, this is the property, this is the property, Mayor, that we were talking about. That's, that's the property, all of the, the city's property out there, including the industrial property, the roads, and right of ways and everything. Because even if you don't, uh, according to the attorneys, even if you do, do not, for example, this property here is technically not in the Cooperative District, but if you do any kind of incentive on this property down here, and it's served by that road, that you do the work, then, then you can actually assess the fee on that, because you've, you've helped develop that property. And so, anything that touches like that, so they suggested that we put the roads in as well, and the right of ways, so.
That, that would also include the sewer and water?
Yes, water and sewer, yes.
Everybody understand what, how he explained?
So when do we make those appointments? When do we make the appointments?
The, the first appointments are the incorporators, it's like the Friends of the Park, they're the, they're the incorporators. So, the incorporators serve as the, as the first board members. And then when their terms run out, then you make the appointments. It's like the, uh, we get the Friends of the Park, Friends of the Library, the incorporators become the board members to begin with.
How long a time?
I believe two or four years. It's in there, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a four-year term, or if they're staggered to begin with, so that they're not all... Come and give it the same time.
And you guys, uh... So, the members you got now is actually listed in order to the incorporation?
Yes, that's the, those are the incorporators. Those are the three people that incorporate it. You gotta have three natural citizens and natural persons, and, like I said, it's very similar to the Friends of the Park, or the, the Friends of the Library incorporations. And they have to get permission from the two public entities to, uh, incorporate before they can incorporate. So those incorporation papers cannot be filed until the resolution is adopted by the council approving that incorporation of that district. Those are non-paid positions, and there is no compensation, and the Cooperative District operates purely for the benefit of the City of Winfield and the Water Department as the two entities, and all of, anything that comes to the Cooperative District flows to them as a group.
What about, uh, appointing any other elected official to that board? Is that, is that, uh, a no-do or can-be?
Well, there's no, there, there is no prohibition on an elected official, but one of the things that I will, uh, I will say is that neither this board, neither this council, nor, a- as I have been informed, and it, and as I read the, the statute, neither this council nor the Water Board can appoint someone to serve by virtue of a position that they hold. In other words, if you appoint the chairman of the Water Board, you're appointing whoever the chairman is. That person serves that term, even when they're no longer the chairman of the Water Board. You're, you're appointing a person, not a position. That person can be in a position, but it's not like the current, the current Water Board, the mayor is on the Water Board. Whoever is the mayor is on the Water Board. Whenever the mayor changes, that person changes. If the mayor is appointed as a board member on this, he is a, Randy Price is a board member on this, until Randy Price's term ends, and it's not, and it doesn't end with him no longer being mayor. Uh, you serve a term, because you have to be a person, not an elected position that serves. That's in the statute.
Right, there's, none of us on that board is a elected official.
Right. You're not, you're not by virtue of being in elected position.
Well, that's, that's why I'm not sure.
Or a board position or whatever.
Clarify that.
You are there personally.
No other, nobody's got any other discussion about the Cooperative District, no, I need to ask for a motion in a second to, uh, pass Resolution fourteen nineteen, a resolution to form this Cooperative District.
So these are when we, that three, that start, the board?
For the corporation, to incorporate.
Two from the city and one from the Water Department?
Ma'am.
Two from the city and one from the Water Department?
Correct. Till then, I need to ask for a motion. I got a motion from Brad in a second. And Chris, all in favor to move forward? Just an actual one you got here?
That's the resolution that I need you to sign, and then they get back, and then this is the...
That's the one each one of us got to sign for our notice.
You already have?
You sure?
Yes. Did she just certify that? I know what you're saying, man, you're seeing this right here, but this is... This is exhibit A of the incorporation, which is... It's just a copy of it, and you, and here's the original, here's the original that you and Jones and Dad bought.
On the, Gina, on the pickleball court here, did I, did I notice some fencing at the each end of it?
So what we have there is our temporary fencing that we use on the ball field, and we just put that up, keep hanging balls from going in the mouth right now.
Uh, so, you're waiting back from, I understand, according to this December second newsletter here, you're waiting for Kenneth to give you, to give you a quote. Have you got any other quotes from anybody else?
I have it, it actually came out today.
If you don't mind, try to go ahead and get maybe two more, prepare for two more competitive quote. But we don't, I don't see it in my, says you've attached it, ma'am, I got printed, about the lighting?
The last page?
Yes, ma'am. Does anybody got a copy of the lighting?
No.
Can you make sure that all the council gets a copy of that? And me as well, just email it, or text or email it. So Alabama Power's gonna give you options of, uh, their thoughts on it. And about the tennis court, we're still, uh... That's for the pickleball. I'll, I'll show that, you haven't seen it. Oh. So we're gonna, I think we're gonna need to see what Alabama Power's got to offer. I'll give you something to sleep on, look at, study on, uh... Uh, y'all see though, everybody's got this copy here, coming to tennis court. I think we need to... I think we need to, this is here in the near, very near future, decide what we're going to do with those tennis courts. She's had, we've had it looked at a couple of times over the last eight to ten years. We've had it looked at different ways and every, everybody that's looked at it has pretty much said it needs to start all over. Because of the shape that it's in, but there is, there is a deal where there could be no warranty on it. Overlaying that, is it correct, Gina?
Pretty much, I do.
Tennis courts clauses to the community center?
Yeah. Yeah, it's right there beside the.
Can we catch it?
Can you, that's what, can you explain to them what they've told you the best option?
Where the concrete is falling, chicken has been coming up in homes and the breaks that are in it are going to come back through whatever you put on top of it.
I need y'all to look at those and make quick results, get an idea of what we're looking at for is what it's going to take to fix it. Before we decide to get quote from doing concrete or whatever, or taking that out and redoing it if you want to patch it. Do we still have several people attempting to play tennis on the court?
Yeah, actually not the grand, it's sort of youth and adult tennis this past season. When it's warm weather, it's covered up usually every night.
Probably even more if we had it fixed. How's the lighting up there at that tennis court?
There.
Needs to be updated LED?
It does.
So probably when we got, when you're meeting with, this says tomorrow as in the third of tomorrow, when you're meeting with Alabama Power, you might want to go ahead and look at that lighting up there as well. About upgrading it.
Mayor, another lighting issue is when we exit the park, we still need a street light there where people drive off in that home. They've talked about it several times. So if you're talking about a street lights.
Is there a pole?
When you're leaving the community center and to pull out for the, you know, people drive off in that.
Is there, Miles asked, is there a pole where they? Maybe if it's a monthly type light, they'll put the pole up to fix it, to, to do it. So, put that back on, put that on the agenda from the council meeting. Lighting at the end of the exit to the, at the court coming back out on the community street. If nobody else has got anything else, I need to ask for a motion to prove that the council's payable.
Mayor, I'd like to give you something to share with the council.
Sit on the agenda.
Working on your old business.
Mike leads off here with, I'll get to what he's getting to. He leads off with Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven. For I know the plans I have for you declares the Lord plans to prosper you and not harm you, plans to give you and hope and future. He says, I am grateful to the citizens of my hometown for allowing me to serve them in various capacity for almost twenty-four years. Please accept this document as my notice of retirement effective February the first, twenty twenty-six. Mike Walker, December the second, twenty twenty-five. I'm appreciative of your service you've given, Mike. No doubt about it. Comes time us to take the city's living. Truly prayed about it and thought about it and talked about it. I know the rest of the council knows as well, it's going to be a loss having you with it, working for us in the city capacity. I guess the council is going to be hoping to accept his resignation letters from February first. Will you work out till that day or you got time?
Yeah. That, that's the date that you and I and several councilor have talked about would give me time to close out the administrator office. So that's, that's why I chose that date.
All right, I appreciate it. Get a motion to pro, play, play the bill. Got a motion from Tim Garrison in a second, Miles, Miles all in favor. Next item on the agenda is a master motion to adjourn. Gina made that motion and Brad second all in favor. Take care.
Hi, my name is Dana here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since nineteen oh seven.
Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guenen with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guenen and Fayette.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guenen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck Spann here with Spann Hardware and Equipment in downtown Winfield. Hope you're having a happy fall. As we move into the fall season, any of your needs you have around the house as far as lawn cleanup, whether you need blowers, sweepers, lawnmowers to chop them up with, or just handheld tools for projects around the house. Come see us, we'll help you out. Spann Hardware and Equipment, downtown Winfield.
Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bradford, State Farm Agent in Winfield. And I'd like to introduce my team to you. To my left, to the far left is Beth Turner. And next to her is Ann Barnes and to my right here is Mr. Todd Estes. We'd like to invite you to call us or come see us at any time for any of your insurance needs. We're happy to help you in any way. We appreciate your business and we look forward to hearing you and doing business with you. Thank you.